Gators, so I'm used to this heat and the rest of y'all. Ha! Actually, tonight, I'd like to ask Mr. Dickinson if he would give the indication for us, please.
I will, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this wonderful city in which we are privileged to serve the citizens. We ask that you would be with us tonight, guide our deliberations, and help us make the correct decisions for the people that we serve. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let the record reflect, please, that all members of council are present. We do believe we have Mr. Thompson on the phone. Greg, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, welcome. We miss you. And Ms. Crawford is...
Well, just got off Capitol Hill.
Thank you, sir. She's delivering a child to college, so she's unable to be here tonight. I need, please, a motion of the approval of the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sams.
We do need to add an executive legal.
Okay. On the discussion side, we do need to add an executive session for legal. So we'll need to put that right at the very, very end, right after the mayor's update, which will be very short tonight. Other than that, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the approval of the consent agenda, this is the council meeting, an executive session minutes from August 13th, planning commission and historic preservation from July. Need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Malcolm, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to public forum, before we really jump into the meat and potatoes part, I did want to go ahead and take a moment and tell you really how lucky we are to be in the City of Monroe, and there are few people that I love as much as David Dickinson. So if you would, turn your eyes to this picture of John Howard in the University of Georgia locker room the week before kickoff, and I found that locker of a tight end at the University of Georgia, and I had my picture taken with it. So you can see where I've been, and I put some voodoo on the actual locker room itself. But that's David's locker. I thought that was really cool.
And for those of you who don't know, that's my grandson, so... And I'm so proud of that boy. I don't know if he's ever going to play a day over there, but just to be on a team of that caliber... And he's not the only kid from Monroe, David Moody.
Brandon, yeah.
Yeah. His son is on there as well. So two kids from Monroe area on the best football team in the United States.
Go Dawgs.
Go Dawgs.
Enough of that. As I was searching Brandon's locker, Coach Smart came out of his office and kicked me out, so... Probably. Now, the other thing I want you to know, and this is where we're lucky, and you all know we had a rough storm last week, actually, that night when I was in the locker room, storms were going on here. Our guys from the utility department, and I was going to mention this when we get to utilities, but while I'm talking, I might as well, and y'all are probably going to run out because it's too hot, those guys from utilities just go over and above for our residents, and we cannot be more thankful. So they know that I feel that way. Chris wrote a nice letter to our team this morning. It just shows how much we appreciate them, and that there's certain people who really have the ability to light up a room and make this place work. One of them is in the back of the room, her name's Amy. Amy Lee, you want to stand up? I know I'm not officially recognizing you, but Amy is the kind who makes the day, just the room brighter when she walks in. The other one's named Dwayne Day, and he's sitting right here. Dwayne, you want to stand up for me? Now, okay, how long you been here?
About 39 years.
And when can you retire? About 15 years ago?
Yeah.
But you're not gonna?
Not really.
Well, he is our longest-tenured employee, and Dwayne, I just wanted to tell you how much we appreciate you. I mean, every single day, how much you go over and above, and I appreciate it. And not to leave out the longest-tenured employee who is a director, so you don't count anymore, Danny Smith. You can't leave. You don't have a choice. But the three of you, seriously, I appreciate everything you do, and it just makes a world of difference for our homeowners, residents, and citizens. So thank you so much. Now, it's very hot, so Amy and Dwayne, you all going to take off? Danny? Sorry. Moving to Logan's report. Moving to the city administrator update, please.
Do we need to do the proclamation first? How are we doing that tonight?
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a proclamation here.
In public comment.
I got lost in...
Too hot for you?
Got lost in saying how wonderful those people were. Okay, proclamation for City Monroe, Georgia. Georgia Reads Day on September 30th. Whereas literacy is not just an education issue, but an economic workforce and quality of life issue, it is also a predictor of future educational achievement, economic status, and lifelong health and well-being. And whereas in 2023, 61% of Georgia rising 4th graders did not read proficiently, and research shows that children who are proficient readers by the end of 3rd grade are four times more likely to graduate from high school than their peers who are not reading on grade level. And whereas the General Assembly recognized the importance of literacy skills with the passage of two bills in 2023, Senate Bill 211 that created the Georgia Council on Literacy, and House Bill 538 that requires comprehensive education reforms for reading instruction in the science of reading. And whereas understanding that collaborative efforts and strategic partnerships must be undertaken to effectively address literacy issues, the Georgia Municipal Association and its nonprofit organization, Georgia City Solutions, members of the Georgia General Assembly and football champion now-turned-children's author Malcolm Mitchell partnered with the Georgia Council on Literacy to launch Georgia Reads at the 2024 GMA Annual Convention. And whereas community involvement is essential to the literacy improvement, and Georgia Reads will include recognizing 10 community partnerships that have increased literacy in the past three to five years as Georgia Reads communities. And whereas September 30th, 2024 marks a date when all Georgians are encouraged to create awareness about the importance of reading and encourage community partnerships to promote future literacy improvements. And whereas together we can improve Georgia's economic vitality one book at a time, now therefore, I, John S. Howard, Mayor of the City of Monroe, do hereby proclaim September 30th, 2024 as Monroe Reads Day in the City of Monroe, Georgia, and encourage all residents, businesses, and community partners to help promote and elevate literacy as a community priority. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the City of Monroe, Georgia this 10th day of September 2024. John Howard. Moving to public comments, I have Joe Dixon came in. Joe, were you signing to speak, or did you want to... You just let me know you're here? Thank you. Now, Logan.
Okay, I'll be brief because it's super hot in here for everybody. Just to echo what the mayor said about the storm damage from a couple weeks ago, absolutely amazing teamwork, not just from utilities, which are always great, but public work, public safety, everybody coming together, everybody after hours, customer service, it was all hands on deck. I don't think people realize the extent of the damages that we had that Thursday evening. It was something else. Really want to thank the City of Covington for lending assistance as well, and the City of Elberton, they both sent their line crews here to assist us on the electric side, so hats off to that mutual aid, and we do the same, and we often do the same for other ECG communities. So wanted to mention that. Wanted to also mention that we're getting a lot of calls for service on the telecom side because of cuts to the fiber services. These are happening more and more frequently due to Comcast coming in with their contractors and just erroneously cutting our lines. Oftentimes, they're working without permits, so we're going to put our heads together and see what we can do to remedy that situation. It's become a weekly, sometimes daily, throughout a week, incidents throughout our city and even outside the city and our service areas. So we had a few more today that were cut in a couple different areas, so we're going to be working on potential solutions there. So we apologize to our customers, we'll get them fixed and repaired as soon as possible, but some things are just out of our hands. And then lastly, Chris may be talking about this, but I really wanted to toot the horn. We received the placemaking award from the Georgia Downtown Association, best placemaking award in the state for our town green project. They recognized six years of hard work and dedication by you all for the project, debt-free, you know, paid for by Sploost, and just a huge project from a brownfield cleanup to what it is today, so we're really proud of that project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Probst. Are there any questions for Logan? Hearing none, we'll move to the assistant city administrator update. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, sir. Couple of quick notes, our visitor center museum, the exterior actually started yesterday with a paint coat, so that should be done here very shortly. The project that is going on adjacent and what used to be Hammock Park, that'll be where we're putting the Monroe Monument sign, is in progress. We've got to get both contractors together, but that should start with demo here shortly. I wanted to thank Greystone Church, who on Labor Day committed 10 volunteers to our city to go through and clean up downtown, and they were, I think, I don't know if they were surprised, happy, or a little bit disappointed, because the response that we got back was downtown was very clean. So the guys do a great job of staying on top of that because they had already come in first thing that morning, but I'm sure they hit a couple of little details and hit some alleys and stuff like that. But I appreciate organizations and churches helping us out anytime. So airport, the taxiway crack seal is complete. All we have to do is essentially pass DOT inspection to say that everything's final there. That went pretty smooth. Good contractor. Our Wayne Street parking expansion from the old municipal court lot, we actually, we have a conference call tomorrow to get that process started. And the other things, Logan stole a little bit of the thunder on the placemaking award. He did a great job of explaining that. Our first Friday night concert, it rained just a little bit, but we still had about 1,500 people on site. That's from the placer data that we pulled today. Fall Fest is around the corner, October 12th. We'll take any volunteers. I figure anybody that's here tonight can volunteer and help us out on that event. That'll be a great Saturday. Last year, we had 22,000 people in attendance, so we're hoping that weather holds out and we have that same attendance this year, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions, Chris? Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Moving to department reports.
Mr. Troy is working on our air.
Do you want to take his?
It's kind of the same thing, the taxiway, the visitor center museum, that's mostly his report, things that he's been knocking out and doing. Yeah, he does a great job.
Thank you, thank you. He does a fantastic job. Code report, Mr. Callender.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Joseph, if you can make sure that... There we go. Thank you. So, yeah, we had our public presentation on August 29th of the Form-Based Code. Pleased to present, or pleased to report that there were 174 people who had actually registered for it through our Zoom app, but there were, I think, 82 total participants, which considered to be successful. That was the most people that had attended any of the events. I think even the Coda Palooza combined, that was probably the most folks that we had that were interested in the draft being presented to the public. And so it is available on our website right now. At the top of the website, there's a hot link that says Form-Based Code, Public Draft Review. It takes you to the page where the public draft is located, including the character map. And right now, we're asking that any input for this Form-Based Code draft be presented to the staff by September 28th. And if I can get it forward here with the... Having some issues here. There we go. So the consultant had mentioned during their presentation, just to make sure that you're looking at the document with empty hands when you start with, you don't start taking notes right away, then go through it with a highlighter, make notes of items of interest, come back and formulate some draft comments, and before you submit any formal comments, that's the pen step, basically, after you've kind of thought through, because a lot of questions that someone may have could be answered by reading the document in its entirety. And the email address is fbc-comment@monroegav.gov, if anyone's not familiar with that. Again, they're due by 9/28. And just to give the council an idea where we are, this was the slide we prepared and had presented in the presentation for the draft, but we're near the end, so this is in the last stages of the development of the Form-Based Code. And that's all I had for that. Again, it's on our webpage. We look forward to some public input. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Callender. Any questions for Brad? Hearing none, Mr. Wilson. How are you?
Doing all right.
Good.
So real quick, just had a handful of things to go over, give updates on. So the downtown hotel feasibility study, so we got some preliminary numbers back on that. I'm not going to go through all of it. You've got, should have all that in your packet, but I'll hit on a couple of the high things there. So comparatively speaking to the study that we did back in 2016, they originally came back with some numbers, that first-year hotel occupancy rate would look like 45% to 50%, and that was at an average nightly room rate of $90 to $95. And so if you're looking at it for the 2024, this current study, and the numbers that we've got back so far, that initial year would be a 61% occupancy rate is their estimate, and that would be at an average rate of $158 a night, so both of those have gone up pretty good. And then moving forward, we'll skip a few to the fifth year out on their projections. They had, the original study had it at 57% to 62%, so that would have been just a hair, would have been actually a good bit less, maybe a hair over what it would be in the first year now, and that was at $105 to $110 a night. And then the fifth year for the current study has us at 73% occupancy rate with $182 nights. All of that's gone up. All of that's good. Those are good numbers. We'll find out how good once we put RFP out there for this. But, and the assumptions that were made there is that we've got Hilton, Marriott, and IHG are the ones that they're kind of hitting on, is we're looking for premium brands but limited-service hotels, you know, for that space. So, and then one other thing, they did, those numbers came back that much better despite the fact that they're also factoring in that Covington is getting a new hotel, a 95-room Spring Hill Suites, and then also Bethlehem is getting another one, they've already got one, but they're getting an 80-room Fairfield Inn. So all those numbers are good. They've, like I said, they've improved pretty good over eight years ago, and if you want to get some more detail on that, you've got a lot of stuff to read through there if you'd like. And then Highland Group, when they're done, and they're actually ahead of schedule, will probably get this done before the end of this month. We originally said end of October and maybe going in November, but they should be done sometime before the end of this month. And so once we get that back, part of what they do is, in this study, is they come in and they present, and they give you the full details and the breakdown of what they did and how they came to the conclusions, all of this stuff. So we'll figure all that out, and then hopefully have them come in and talk to you a little bit more about it. Economic Development Facebook page, still growing, a little bit slower this month, just didn't have as many things as we normally had posted, or I had normally posted. Had a couple of properties leased through it in August, and then we've got a couple that are still in negotiation right now. So the good news is, we've got a lot of, we've got a repository to pull from, you know, people that are interested in property. So as they come available, they're not necessarily going up there, but they're being referred out to some folks who are already looking for spaces, too. City and downtown business activities, so we had new business licenses issued in August. We had 12, three were in the DDA, and then business license deletions, we had five, two of those were in the DDA, and a couple of those are fairly big. We had Broad Street Boots, which we already know there's a wine store going in there, and then Southern Brewing was the other big one. So, and I've got somebody that's already working with them on that particular space and in some talks, and we'll see how that progresses, but we, if we don't move forward with that one, then well, probably the one that gets posted up. And then last thing, just an update on the T-Mobile Hometown Grant, so they'll sprinkle a little bad news, we did not get that. And so for that, there were 25 grants that were issued up to $50,000 per, for quarter two, there were over 500 applications that were received, and they're all individually graded against their criteria, which is, again, in that packet. I can give you some thoughts on where we probably, why we wouldn't have gotten it, but that being said, we didn't get it this time, we'll try again next time and see if we have a better project for them the next time around to meet up with those.
You can't win them all.
Can't win them all.
And we win a lot.
That's it. That's all I've got. I'll leave it open for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wilson? Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, finance?
Thank you, Mayor. The finance report, of course, is in the agenda packet that I know you can't view right now, so I'll hit some highlights, and if you have any questions, once you're able to view it, by all means, I'm always available. And the general fund, local option sales tax collections remain slightly below budget for this time of year, while overall expenses in the general fund are slightly above budget. Overall, revenues for general fund are down, but we don't receive property tax collections until November, December, so that's always fourth quarter. And the utility fund, overall revenues and expenses are trending on budget. And the solid waste fund, overall expenses and revenues are below budget. We're currently working on the 2025 budget with department directors, and we will have budget meetings scheduled over the next couple of months, and then we will all convene with mayor and council to look at the 2025 budget, probably towards the middle to end of October, is what we're probably looking at, maybe the first of November. And I'll send out some dates for all of y'all to be well-prepared for that, so if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Beth. Are there any questions for Ms. Thompson? Hearing none, Chief Dykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, you have the July statistics for our department, and I will not apologize, as I said last month, we had just finished July, and I said this month I would be happy to report that we had no reportable fires in the city during the month of July out of our 211 incidents. Since then, the incident aura has changed for us, and we have been pretty slammed. I'd like to add that on the 17th of last month, we had nine calls in one hour during the Saturday storm, that, of course, we were not able to mitigate all of them in a one-hour period. That turned into a lengthy evening. And the Saturday, the 29th, we had 13 calls that came in, 13 incidents that came in during that first hour of the powerful storm that came through, and that ended up, that was 13 of 25 incidents in that 24-hour shift, which, to my knowledge, is the most that we've had my entire time working in the city. What I would like to say on that is, especially that Saturday, what I saw amongst all of our departments working together was pretty amazing, and it's very easy for folks to say that's not my job, or that's somebody else's department. That was not the case at all. Everybody that was out that night was working towards one common goal, and I think that a lot of our departments right now are hearing a lot of negative from a small portion of the city, and I think we ought to, we ought to really praise all the guys that are out there doing the work, because they're doing a fantastic job in to get, to get the city back up and operational after what we saw out there. I know you were probably out there until 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock that morning, and then back at the crack of dawn, so, you know, kudos, kudos to those guys for what they do in helping us out and getting everything back online. As for fires, on September 3rd, we had two structure fires in one shift, and again, another one of those that just doesn't happen. One of them was in the county, but because of location and the bridge being out, we were the first ones there. And then we also had a very significant fire loss on Boulevard. Our fire marshal has investigated, we've also reached out to the state fire marshal's office, and if you go by there, you will see that the state fire marshal has placed the placard out front with the $10,000 reward notification for any information that leads to an arson conviction. So I will leave that at that. If anybody has information, we would definitely like to have that. Furthermore, that day, we had the tragedy in Barrow County, and we sent personnel along with PD, so it has been an absolute change of events, all different types of incidents, but just really seeing how all departments in different capacities are working together is very encouraging, even though some of these are things that we hope that we never have to respond to ever again. And on the last note, a positive thing, we did have our annual audit by Georgia Firefighter Standards and Training Council yesterday to come in and do an audit of the department, and so we are good for, we're in compliance for yet another year, so that is, that is a good thing, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Are there any questions for Chief Dykes? All our guys are safe, no injuries?
Yeah, all our guys are good.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Chief Watts?
Well, first of all, I'm glad to be back, so thank you for having me here. Going into our report, we had a total of 2,602 calls, which is up about 300 calls from this time last year, and our area checks were up 2,700 calls from this time last year. And I kind of attribute those area checks to these next numbers that I want to report on, and I'm going to keep reporting on these, because this is something to brag on, especially from my perspective, and I would think you guys would think so, too. Our total offenses in the city are down by 44%. Our arrests are actually down by 20%, and our crimes against persons are down by 35%. Crimes against property is down 43%, and crimes against society is down 54%. So, our officers are doing a fantastic job policing the streets here in the city of Monroe, and I do want to take the time to brag just a little bit on a couple of the officers and their accomplishments. On August 20th, you know, our officers responded to the area of Peach State Bank, it was about 7:00 that evening, and they found an unconscious male passed out behind the wheel, pale skin, blue lips, and immediately, our officers recognized that as an overdose, and they started administering the Narcan. They administered about three canisters of Narcan, were able to bring that individual back for EMS to then transport to P. M. Walton. I attribute that as a life-saving event there, so kudos to those officers that were involved in that. And then we had, Detective Lewis had an actual rape case that went to trial, and the defendant was, and it was a great case that he actually did the investigation and put all the details together. The jury found the defendant guilty, and he was sentenced to 30 years confinement for the actual rape and 10 years for the false imprisonment of the victim. So, that's a kudos to that detective and his hard work. And just like Chief Dyke said, from the event last Wednesday, that unfortunate event, we actually sent seven of our officers responding from the city to that, and they filled in the various roles on that scene. And we did a debriefing after they came back, and we actually had a lot of them write out the details of what they're involved in. And the only thing I would ask is continue to pray for the men and women that, and the teachers and staff of that whole incident, because that's such a traumatic event for them to go to and respond to, and not just the incident itself, but even the aftermath of notifying families and having to witness that and see that. I mean, it's just sheer chaos and just heartbreaking, and to even think that something like that can even happen in our country is unthinkable. But I'm very proud of those that we sent and how they were able to assist, and just, I'm proud of our agency, and just like Chief Dykes was saying, you know, it takes a lot out of our men and women to serve in those capacities, and I'm just thankful there's still men and women willing to serve in those capacities. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you should have any.
Well, we're lucky to have you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, your whole team. Are there any questions for RV?
Thank you, sir.
Danny Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I got two quick notes. We picked up over 103 mattresses in July. Still having the same issue, we're not being able to ID over half of them. But I will say, there are some areas that are starting to look a little better. I guess we got all theirs.
[laughing]
It's dropped a little bit. And the last thing I got, effective October the 7th, that's the second week in October, we are officially going to send out the two automatic side loaders on the routes. We're in the process of sending the notices out to customers within the next 30 days. And we have gotten a lot of calls because we've been running a pilot route, and customers are used to the rail loader trucks picking up in that area where the guys on the back can go behind a pole or go behind a car and pull it out and dump it, where that's going to change. So, that's what these guidelines are. It's automated truck for one single operator, and it can't have any obstructions. And overflow, we'll work through the overflow. And I take any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Danny. Are there any questions, Mr. Smith?
And thanks again for your dedication to the city.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Still?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unless you have any questions about the report, I'll just highlight a few areas. We are, if all goes to plan, three days from completing our portion of the 2024 AL-MEAG program, we've got another day of crack sealing on Pennell and two days of patching on Poplar Street. And then, a week from today, a milling contractor will be in town starting on McDaniel, milling it down, planing it down an inch and a half. It's roughly four days' worth with the contractor there. We'll get that out, get it cleaned up, then the county will come in and pave that road, Cherry Hill Road, Poplar, and Pennell. And then we'll finally be through with that section. We've done a ton of patching over the last month, probably more patching than we've ever done in a single month. And bulk of it, surprisingly enough, was, not surprisingly enough, was out on Cherry Hill. The amount of truck traffic that comes in and out of there has been crazy to see going around our workstations every day. But the guys are, they're done out there. Like I said, three more days and they'll be complete, and then we'll have roughly three and a half, almost four miles of new overlaid streets within the city. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Still?
The only one I have, and you're just placement, is off with Rodney, the CDBG project. Once, let's say we start that milling by the end of the month, how quickly will we be finished?
Well, the span that way should be, should take more than a week to mill it out, I wouldn't, and a couple of days to put it back, typically. Four days for all of McDaniel, and it's over two miles. Depending on the size of the milling head, the machine that the contractor comes in with, that could add some time to it.
Okay.
If it's a four-foot head or six-foot head, it shouldn't take, I wouldn't think any more than a week to get it out. Weather's, again, is going to-
Of course.
And availability of asphalt as well, so.
All right, thank you.
Two weeks, maybe. I was putting no P number on it.
Be done by the end of September. Thank you. Rodney?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick, couple of updates. We got the gas bid next Thursday, September 19th, for the high-pressure main to be installed for the county jail. Our city guys or crews are getting ready to gear up for the on-site part, which is the low-pressure. We'll be installing that ourselves. Gas, electric, and sewer has all finished on the bypass. Finally, water's got a few more spots they've got to relocate the mains. The Glen Irish CDBG, slowly but surely. I know there's a lot of mad people. Unfortunately, this is the first one we've had that we've had to have open cut, which, because the main was so shallow in those areas, it was less than three foot deep, so they had to dig it out and put ductile in. If we pipe burst it, the road would have bucked all the way, the whole length of the job. So, that's why it's so muddy, because we've had the open cut. If all goes well, that should end this week. The paving crew is set to start the week of the 23rd. They're going to mill and start paving on the section of Bryant, Stylworth, and Edwards. And then, by that time, they should have Glen Irish ready to mill and pave from Maribor all the way down to Spring. So, if everything goes good, hopefully by the first part of October, we'll be done.
I know they're frustrated, but their pace is definitely real worried.
It's been a very frustrating job. We also have the bid openings on the 26th for the 500,000-gallon elevated tank and the transmission main to it. That's the tank that'll be going in over at Cherry Hill. And then, the electric crew's finishing up on the underground to the jail, the jail site there. And while we're on the electric, I'd like to thank Jeremiah and all the crews, again, for all the help at night. Also, Elberton and Covington both sent a crew here. If we hadn't had those crews, that would have been about a four-days' worth of work, so we were fortunate to get the help. So, very, very thankful to all those guys. Like I said, Public Works, Fire, for clearing the roads, and we had guys in from the water, sewer, and gas crew as well, so it was all good effort, but thanks to everybody.
Nobody injured, we're good.
Nobody injured that night?
Nobody injured.
Right. Any questions for Rodney?
Thank you, Mr. Middlebrooks. Back to Logan to take Mike's report.
Yeah, real quick, and then we're down to business. So, just an update on the fiber installs, 152 new installs for August. I think that's the most we've done yet. That gives us about 55% of the system has now been converted to fully fiber, so that's good. Bond project currently, the Bankers Boulevard area and some of the streets kind of across from GWA, along with the Green Acres area up on North 11, have been converted over the past month. We now have 526 registered streaming accounts for the TV product, and telecom has been finishing up everything for the bypass relocation as well. It's been a ton of work. Rodney already knows about all of his work for the bypass, which is more than expected. We also had way more than expected on the telecom side as well, so we've got a lot of skin in the game for this bypass to make it come to fruition. With that, let's get down to business.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Are there any questions for Logan? Hearing none, we'll move into Department Request Airport, Mr. Bailey?
Thank you. This is our annual TA letter from the DOT. It's our 2025 tentative allocation. It is for the runway 321 approach clearing that I've talked about. We had our LIDAR study last year, and we've been issued a number of obstructions, trees to be removed from both ends of the airport. This is the first part of that. The grant is actually a total, or the project is actually a total of $486,480, and that's for removal, land acquisition, and whatnot. Our total expense of that is only 10%, so asking for the approval of, to approve this tentative allocation of $48,648.
Any questions for Chris? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Boyce. Is there a second?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to Public Works, tap grant fee proposal, Mr. Bailey?
Thank you. And, Mr. Probst, if you want to, you can jump in on this if I miss anything. This is for the McDaniel Street tap grant that we had brought the awarded consultant and engineer of Keckenwood to you guys, I think, a couple of months ago. We've been working on the fee schedule and the actual proposal for the project. This has went through the DOT and then Atlas Consulting that is actually hired by the DOT to check over everything. This request is for a not-to-exceed $248,614 for the complete administration of that tap grant project on McDaniel Street, from everything, from design to management during the actual construction of it, to close out, to all documents that are required to go to the DOT and various environmental studies. And I'll be glad to take any questions. But this will allow us to proceed with that project and get everything started on a street scape.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sams. All in, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries, that passes.
Thank you.
By Mr. Probst. Utilities?
All right. So, we've been here before with the purchase power agreement through MEAG. This is technically our Fourth Amendment. A little confusing, this is the Third Amendment to the solar purchase agreement that we've done a few times now. And so, a little history on that. There's a solar project in South Georgia that's MEAG is a part of, and of course, you know, we're a part of MEAG. And so, they're trying to find cities that would go along with the build-out of this new solar project down there. And through a couple different iterations of the project, it's not gone through, the company's gone bankrupt, or it was deemed infeasible for some reason by another company. Here we are on the third try. It is quite feasible. MEAG's negotiated really great contracts. Should it not work out, we still get paid some amount of money, so we're not out anything. But all of the cities that were, that had agreed to the previous power purchase agreement have decided to go back together and adopt this third iteration of it. So, that speaks to the nature of this power purchase agreement in that it's a real necessity now in the state of Georgia, especially given the political climate for some of our coal-fired power plants. And we just want to make sure that, you know, we have plenty of relatively cheap alternative fuel sources available for our customers for the long term. So, this is, it's not a short-term play, but it is a medium-to-long-term play to ensure that we have a very viable portfolio, both in terms of power supply and what you could consider green, non-emitting energy. So, I talked with Mr. Thompson a lot about this. As you know, he's on the MEAG board. I believe he was supportive. And again, everybody in the MEAG system that had signed up previously is ready to go on this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Mr. Thompson, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think Logan said it well.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries, that passes. Moving to Utilities, purchase of truck with the reel lift body, Mr. Middlebrooks?
Thank you, Mayor. So, we, in this year's CIP, we had a Ford F-550 flatbed truck to purchase. We was doing it through the lease program. Since then, we found out that the truck's not in production yet, and we've already started, this was for the underground electric crew. We've already started the crew. We've got a truck borrowed from another crew. So, our plan for the truck was to then take it to Ring Power to have this reel put on that allows us to pick the reels up, load them, take them to the job. It'll free spool off as we install. Also allows us to re-spool our old reels, which has been a problem. Chris can speak to this. We've got a lot of them sitting in the back of the warehouse that you can no longer spool off. So, this will allow us to re-spool those reels. What we found out was Ring won't take the truck anyway. They have to, they buy the trucks, or purchase the trucks straight from Ford, or Chevrolet or Dodge, whatever you pick, because of the suspension and the beds that have to be built in order to hold the weight. So, they have a demo truck available. It's $89,500. The truck's ready to go. It's untitled, it was a 2022 model, so we get all the factory warranties with the purchase. The purchasing department looked at a 450. If we purchased it, it was in the low 80s, just the truck. So, this is really a, it's probably about a $30,000 to $40,000 savings purchasing the demo unit. So, I'm asking your approval to purchase that with CIP funds.
Thank you, Rodney. Are there any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Back to you, Mr. Middlebrooks. Water and sewer connection tap fees?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, back in July, at our budget meeting, we had discussed looking at our connection fees and tap fees, being sure they were in line, especially on the connection fee side, that everybody was basically paying their fair share for the capacity of the system. So, when I started this study, we basically looked at the capacity for not only the water and sewer plant, but also the distribution and the collection system as well. Through that process, and then also looking into, like all the water and wastewater improvements that we've made the last two, three years with the bond projects, as well as a 10-year layout of CIP, we were able to put a value on that remaining capacity. Once that was done, then we started looking at the ERU, which is the residential equivalent unit, to make this as fair as possible. So unfortunately, I don't think you're going to be able to see. Maybe you can. So the water, for the water side, the ERU, which would be a standard 5/8 residential meter, would be $2,300. And then on our tap fees for water, for sewer, the tap fee can only be what it actually costs you to make the tap. In the past, we hadn't had a long side, short side charge. It's all just been one charge. Just to give you an example of, of our current, current inside-the-city residential meter is $1,750 total. That's connection and tap together. The price for material only for a short side service is $1,839. So we're losing money right out, right out the gate, just on the 5/8 residential tap. So we set the rate at $2,300 for the connection fee, and the meter equivalency automatically calculates because the two, the inch, two-inch, four-inch, six-inch, eight-inch meters are built to AWWA standards, which requires the gallons per minute, as you see listed. So it made it really easy on the water side to set those, those rates, and that's how those are set. On the sewer side, with the amount of, looking at, this is also including the sewer plant expansion, included that too. So the ERU comes up to, for sewer, a sewer connection fee, $8,670. With a short sides, long side service of $2317 and $3,078. On the sewer side, from here on out, commercial would be figured based off the ERU calculation form, which I think is included in your packet. That's a form that's adopted by EPD, EPA and AWWA. So none of those numbers are made up by us. Those are, so basically you just plug in your, whatever it is, whether it's a church, whether it's a hotel, apartments, whatever it is, you just plug the number of units, or seats in a restaurant, that type thing, and it'll figure the ERU amount. That is multiplied by the $8,670 to set the tap fee for commercial.
Are there any other, are there any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks? Not even sure exactly what questions to ask.
There's a lot. Yeah.
There's some deep math there.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the fee schedule.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. We have one more item. Back to you, Rodney, for the purchase of sodium hydrochloride storage tanks. Two of them, three of them.
Can we back up one second? Do we need to have an effective date on that? Is that effective immediately, or?
I think it would be best if it was effective immediately. Those that are already in process with us, we can count under the old rate, but anything new, brand new, not in process, that haven't, you know, worked to pay your, your tap fee invoice, I think that's, that's delineated.
You say have yet to pay?
If they've yet to pay, if they've invoiced, then, you know, they can go ahead with the, with the old amount.
Is that, is that good, Rodney?
Yeah, it's fine. I just want to be sure we're clear.
Well, we're coming back to you about the sodium hypochlorite storage tanks.
Yes, thank you. So we recently had an emergency at the water plant. These, we have two 5,200-gallon, built-in place fiberglass tanks in the basement of that building. The one started leaking, and we lost about a half a load of bleach in the process. We were able to pump the rest out before we lost it. But the problem is, is in order to, another tank that size, built-in place, well, there's one being put in in Newnan right now at $221,000. So we had a conversation with our engineer, and Peter made the suggestion that we go to a different type tank, but it would require us to have to install three tanks. One being the doors that are built in the floor to remove in order to take the tanks out, which the tanks won't come out. They're too big. So we had to cut them up to get them out. But we could go to three 3,600-gallon tanks, fit them through the door, install them, and still have the same amount of bleach on hand. So the bid for that come in at $44,986, and then we would do the, that's shipping and all, and then we would install ourselves.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Ms. Malcolm. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Long night. Moving to new business, public hearing for the rezoned at 1125 North Broad Street. Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The rezone request before to the city council, it is located, just to give you some sense of location, is just south of Charlotte Rowell Boulevard and its intersection with North Broad Street. This area is north of the pavilion itself, approximately 105 acres in size. And the proposed development in this rezone request is a mixed-use development that will include a variety of housing types, commercial and natural and civic areas. The plan behind you shows two different rezone designations they're requesting. They're asking for the project to be zoned into a planned commercial district and then a planned residential district. The planned commercial district is approximately 50 acres, and the planned residential district, which is shown in blue on the screen behind you, is approximately 55 acres. The submittal includes a detailed pattern book that includes several plans, this being one of them, that is the illustrative master plan. It gives you some sense of the project and its total scale, if it was built out to its complete maximum. But it includes a variety of different building types, dwelling types, and the plan has gone through several iterations over the course of working with the staff and then having gone to planning commission. And as council is aware, it was tabled last month to address a few concerns. And I'm just going to flip back to give you some background. It's a little smaller on the screen behind you, but this is the first plan that was submitted to the city. And I just would like to point out, especially the area here that's changed the most would be the, the large-scale multifamily area. You can see in the first versions, it was somewhat isolated and independent from the overall master plan areas itself. But through working with this applicant and their consultant, and voicing some of our concerns about that being somewhat of a separate and independent from the overall master plan, we get back to what has been produced thus far. And I believe they've addressed most of our concerns, but I'd like to highlight some of those changes. They've provided greater interconnection for the large-scale multifamily area. And they've essentially reduced the large-scale multifamily development part of it by half. And so the buildings they've shown have now been pared down to being, to being only, I believe, 12-unit buildings here. That would, in a sense, be more like the rest of the development itself. They would have frontage on a through-public street that connects to the rest of the development. And then they have their remaining, half of their units would be in the large-scale buildings on the south side of the project. Just looking at the different land use types that are through there, again, this is a true mixed-use development, and it does include a variety. But your concentration of commercial land uses and mixed-use portions of the development are more concentrated towards the corner of North Broad Street and Charlotte Rowell Boulevard, with the remaining areas that are south and west of the site being more residential in nature. This is a snapshot of the proposed connectivity of the site. So the blue dots you see on the screen, these are the proposed access points. There's four shown on Charlotte Rowell Boulevard, and there are two on Highway 11. One that's significant is one that is accessed from the pavilion development itself that would come northward into the site. I believe that is Pavilion Avenue, if I'm not mistaken, is the name of that street. But they're going to interconnect to that development, as well as providing an interconnected street network throughout their development. This plan also shows in yellow the amount of on-street parking that they would include throughout the development. There are also a number of parking lots that are concentrated up near the commercial areas that are going to be inside buildingable areas. They're going to be to the third layer of the lot, is what we call that. They're not going to be parking lots that are on the street. They're going to be behind buildings. The same would apply to other portions of the development. So they are proposing to develop this project in four total phases. And the first phase, shown in green on the screen behind you, is the southern area of the site. This would be Phase 1. That would include the extension northward from Pavilion, the Pavilion Development, to a road that would connect to Charlotte Rowell Boulevard. So there will be an interconnected, an interconnected road network there, basically providing access to those two points. And then within that phase itself, there would be some interconnecting streets. The large-scale multifamily that I mentioned is proposed to be done in that first phase. The second phase of the project is more concentrated towards Charlotte Rowell Boulevard, near its intersection with North Broad Street. And they're proposing a major road intersection there with Highway 11 to connect up to the Double Springs Church Road Connector. And you can see all these illustrations include basically the representation of what would be a roundabout at that general location. And that has been something that's been on the city's radar for some time, that this intersection be improved instead of signalized that it'd be a roundabout. So they've included that in all their illustrations. But you can see in the second phase, this is where you get into more of the non-residential type of land uses that would obviously be motivated to be developed once there are some more rooftops in the site. Phase 3 is predominantly residential. It's on the western side of the site, and then south of this portion of Phase 1. And then the last and final phase would be some mixed, mixed elements here in Phase 4. There's also a mixture of residential development types, and I believe a few, one or two little mixed-use buildings there. Without getting into a great amount of detail, what's inside the pattern book, which is extensive. The pattern book is, I know, approximately 200 pages long. But inside each one of these character areas that is shown on the screen behind you is a great amount of detail that includes standards for development that each one of these character areas must follow. And so just briefly, there are four shown in this development, and the one that I'm showing here in blue, I believe this is going to be the character area 4 is what it's called. And that includes most of your mixed use, your large-scale multifamily, and then some of your townhome and smaller residential lots in that phase. The yellow is predominantly residential, and that's character area 3. They've also shown a natural and civic area, which is shown in the green. These are some, some of the natural drainage on the site. They're going to have those preserved in that character area. And then finally, kind of an anchor point and a feature that's going to be part of the site, the preservation of an existing silo is going to be in the civic area near the center of the project. Without getting into too much further detail, hopefully the council's had a chance to look at this request. But in short, the plan represents an ideal mixed-use walkable neighborhood, something that the city's been after. And it's developed to the standards that have been proposed in the pattern book. Staff believes the project will be an asset to the city and will be an example for surrounding communities for pursuing smarter, newer urbanist-style development patterns. There were three conditions that were recommended for, by the planning commission with a recommendation of approval. And those three conditions were, the first is, prior to preliminary plat submittal, the developer shall perform a traffic study for the development. Any and all necessary improvements identified in the traffic study shall be represented on the preliminary plat and all subsequent plans and plats. Second condition reads, prior to preliminary plat submittal, the developer shall, shall enter into a fully executed development agreement with the city of Monroe. And third, existing trees shall be retained and preserved throughout areas in the development designated as character area 1, natural area or open space, and existing trees shall be retained and preserved in areas designated as the character area CV or civic area, wherever practical retention of those trees is possible. That were all the, that was all the conditions that were recommended by planning commission. There's a lot with this project, and hopefully I can answer any questions that the council may have at the appropriate time. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Are there any questions for Brad? Hearing none, I'll open this portion of the meeting for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone, yes, ma'am? Could, could you please state your name?
Absolutely. So I'm Erica Gerton. I do need a clicker, just to be able to pull up the. Perfect. So again, I'm Erica Gerton. I'm here on behalf of the Breedlove Project. I'm with Town Planning and Urban Design Collaborative, otherwise known as TPUDC. So we have a lot to get into today, so I'll be relatively quick and happy to answer any of your questions after the fact. So again, thank you, Brad, for kind of giving us a general overview. We're relatively close to downtown Monroe, about five minutes away. Just to the south of the site is the new Pavilion Plaza. We've got the YMCA facility that's just being constructed at the, at the moment. This is just to give a little more context with an aerial view where the site's located. So the site itself originally was Breedlove Dairy Farm. So the historic context of that is it was a 787-acre site. And after it was acquired, it's since been divided up and to create the Pavilion Shopping Plaza, Highland Creek Neighborhood, Walton Board of Education, the YMCA. So this last portion of that original historic Breedlove Dairy Farm is about the 105 acres that we're working with today. So we really wanted to embrace the historic context of this. You know, we'll be able to show you a little bit later on how we've managed to capture that, even in the Breedlove Dairy logo. This is just to give you a general overhead context. We were able to get some really cool drone shots. The site itself is absolutely beautiful. As Brad mentioned, there's an existing silo on the site. There's a lot of flat, open land, but there also is a lot of really great natural features. So we've got some tree-lined rows, not pictured in this, but we'll look on, you know, a little bit later. We've got a stream that kind of runs through the center of the site, as well as a nice pond. So existing zoning is highway business district, so that's going to be more of the heavy commercial uses that are currently permitted with the zoning. And really for this project, it's probably unlike anything that Monroe has seen in terms of the level of detail and design considerations that we've put into this. So for our core principles, our visions and design principles, these have been really constructed through a public shred process. And the outcome of that and hearing all the feedback from the community is kind of how we've established the following. So starting off with placemaking, this is a central feature, I think, to any large master plan development. Really, we want to make sure that not only residents within the community itself, but visitors want to come and experience this place. They want to bring people and make memories here. We want to be really cognizant and work with nature. So again, like protecting the tree-lined rows, we know that we have the condition of approval in order to protect all of those natural resources, and that's something we want to even go above and beyond that, in the sense of working with nature. So we've got a wide, wide variety of mixed use, and ultimately the goal there is to have a development where you can get any, any use or anything that you need within a five-to-10-minute walk. We want people to be able to, you know, leave their homes and go to the grocery store and, and be able to have that luxury. Another thing that that really helps with is we always hear about traffic. It's a huge issue. And as we know, not having to get in your car to get to where you need to go and ultimately helps with what we call internal capture. So we're able to kind of mitigate some of those trips internally to the site instead of having to go outside and putting pressure on infrastructure. So we're providing a lot of housing types and sizes. So in some of these images, just in the top left, we've got what we would call like a mansion flat or an apartment house. And that's really designed to provide flexibility in housing. And that way, we're really suiting all types of people at all income levels, but still keeping in with the character of the community and that, you know, single-family development that a lot of developments are creating these days. But we, we wanted to make sure that we're incorporating all, all different types. To the right, we've got some cottage courts, so more tiny house concept where they're looking into a green. To the bottom, obviously, row homes, townhomes, and then your more standard single family. To the bottom, obviously, row homes, townhomes, and then your more standard single-family. So safe and walkable streets, if people don't feel safe and comfortable, if they don't have shade, they're not going to want to walk. Part of this pattern book is making sure that we're explicitly requiring things like streets for all of our thoroughfare types, so that we're staying true to having a walkable environment. And then trails and park space, so we've tried to trickle in as many trails and park space throughout the entirety of the development, and that's really our connector. You'll see a little bit later on, we've kind of created a continuous green network through the use of trails and parks. So getting into the illustrative master plan and just the process overall, we hosted a five-day design sharet, where essentially, we showed up, we had a blank piece of paper, and throughout the course of the five days, we were able to produce our final illustrative plan that you've all now seen. That included a couple of topical meetings, we had some hands-on workshops. We also set it up to where we have like an open studio, so that people are incentivized to come in and really give us their feedback in person as we're drawing. So that's really cool, and it definitely gives a little bit more of a format where people feel like they can come in and give their thoughts and not be in front of a whole group. So walking through the master plan, so I'm going to start at the most dense area. So just up at the top, we've got this really large civic green with all of the mixed uses facing inward on that. This is kind of, you know, our high, this is where all the stuff's kind of happening. Because it's on Highway 11 and the intersection of Charlotte Rowell, we were really cognizant that we wanted to put the parking in the rear. That way, your impression of that space is not just parking lots, but rather, you know, you're seeing this, you know, activity up at the corner. We've also blended in a lot of what you'll see are these blue. Those are live works, so a lot of the business owners are able to either live above their shops or they can rent that out. We've also, you know, offered some townhomes sprinkled within there, some medium-scale multifamilies, so really in keeping with providing a strong variety of uses. Right here to the center, you'll see this tiny little red dot, so that's actually the existing silo. And then we've created this kind of like a market stall area that, you know, next to the green creates this really cool pedestrian spot that, you know, you can come and go to your farmer's market on the weekend and hang out and have some lunch. Particularly, if you look at this corridor, so as you're coming in on either side, you're getting the impression of that silo as you're entering. So then as we're going a little bit down, so this portion right here was actually kept intentionally, this was the tree-lined row that we saw and wanted to protect. And in doing that, we created this really cool space where we essentially have all these townhomes that are able to face into the corridor, still get some green. And then you'll kind of notice that here is this whole continuous network. And that way, you know, as you're starting off at this end, going all the way up, we've created some park space and trail space so that you're getting that green network within. We also have, you know, I'll point out all the small features first, but we have a little cottage court area here as well as here. Down to the south again is the Pavilion Shopping Plaza. And what we've really tried to do is to better integrate these medium-scale multifamily, which are intended to be that workforce housing for our teachers and our firefighters and all of those people that deserve to have housing just as beautiful as everything else that we're trying to provide in this development. And then this is kind of going to be more of our primary single-family area. The darker-colored yellow is going to be our apartment houses, so those will still, you know, from the street, you might not be able to tell right away that they have multiple units within them just based on the, you know, architectural composition of them, but we've sprinkled them in on some of the larger lots. And another really cool feature is that as you're actually traveling along Charlotte Rowell on this side, that's a little quieter, we've kept the trees that are kind of naturally buffering the site and then put our single-family homes up against it. So really, as you're going along this area, you're not getting the full sense of the density of the development until you actually come into it, or if you're on this side of Charlotte Rowell and Highway 11. So let me, oh, and then we've also created this little like amphitheater area. We'll have some renderings too that we can show you. So this is that silo center. Couple of cool features is, we're trying to really tie in sustainable stormwater, so you'll see some plantings, bioswales. We want to have, you know, safe streets, so, you know, planters that cut off the street so that the, you know, pedestrian can walk around freely. And this is where I was mentioning, that historic logo, the Breedlove Farm logo. Obviously, this isn't there yet, but it could be a cool idea just to honor the site's history. And then this is that proposed roundabout. So what you'll notice here is that as you're driving along, you get all these beautiful views, and hidden in the back is our parking. So, you know, we know that we need to provide enough parking for the type of density that we're drawing. Within the pattern book, we've got a lot of shared parking requirements and stuff of that nature, but overall, keeping in good design practices by kind of sheltering it away and then making this a really neat opportunity that as you're going down, you get that view of the silo. So this is more of like our standard neighborhood. One of these, it's over by the single-family area. You can see, for example, this would be an apartment house right next to a single-family home that are all facing into this beautiful green space, where you can really activate the space, you could put fire pits, you have community events there, and essentially creating these little pocketed neighborhoods of communities within a larger scheme of one whole community. This is an example of a cottage court. So what we've done is we've actually provided access to that pond space off of the cottage court, you know, civic area. And then this is kind of in keeping with what we would envision to be that mixed-use, probably the highest-density portion of the site. So going back to open space, in totality, we're providing 34 acres of total civic space, which includes natural area and just remaining civic space of the 105 acres. For a site of this scale and caliber, that's a pretty impressive number, that we've been able to kind of keep that amount of green space throughout. And again, this is all of the various access points. I just want to call attention to, we've added since, just indicated that there is also on-street parking in this location. So virtually all of our major corridors will provide on-street parking as a requirement for our thoroughfare types. This is just an indicator of our street hierarchy, so you have your main connections, and then you have more of your local roads, and then your rear alleys to be able to access more of your driveways and such, garages. So these are the various thoroughfare types that we have. Each of them has been specifically placed to match the environment itself, so we have section types for all of these that require, you know, anything from the width of your sidewalks to what type of planters you can have. That's all specific to each of the thoroughfare types. This is just a pedestrian shed showing that from the silo center area and then to this kind of like neighborhood center, you can walk throughout the entirety of the site within 10 minutes. So just to preface, this is our site data. I know some of these numbers are quite large. I just wanted to point out that we based the site data, obviously, this is a conceptual master plan, you know, it would have to come before you all when we go through site plan approval, and this is the maximum capacity based on the pattern book standards that we've written of what the site could hold. So this is a little bit, while it is accurate, it also is flexible. One of the things I want to point out is that large-scale multifamily, originally, this was about 204 units. We've narrowed that down and then put it over to the medium-scale multifamily, and that's going to be to account for this area. I know Brad showed this, so this is our proposed zoning. And then again, just want to point out that another revision, since we were approved with planning commission, was we carved back this area a little bit. So this hatched area is just saying that in the entirety of all the Breedlove Neighborhood Center character area, this is the specific, that is the specific location where we would only be permitting that large-scale multifamily building type, which is arguably one of the most beautiful areas because it's right behind that pond space, and all of those buildings will be fronting on the pond or the green area to the back. So this is our phasing plan, again, as Brad mentioned. So this will include the connection off of Charlotte Rowell. And then we've also discussed a lot with staff on what it would look like to actually go through with Phase 1, and we understand that when, you know, if and when that happens, that all of this will need to be plotted, all the lots will need to be plotted in accordance with Phase 1. But ultimately, Phase 1 is the phase that we really feel strongly going forward with, knowing that it's somewhat of a, you know, a natural development pattern off of the Pavilion Plaza. The rest of the phases, knowing that the sewer moratorium's in place and there's still some, you know, we don't know for sure when that will be lifted. So when that does happen, and we could proceed with Phase 1, a lot could change by that point. So we want to make sure that you all know that while this is a phased plan, there's still, you know, there's still a lot of considerations that could happen with the market, and we want to make sure that we're providing the phases that are, you know, providing the uses within the phases that are what the community needs at that time. I think we're frozen. Okay, so just really running over the pattern book regulations, this is kind of your typical structure for the character areas. So they go into very intense detail, just to discuss all facets of the development. Just wanted to give you all kind of an example of what that looked like. So we have frontage types, we have building types, we've got various standards for each that are specific to those. And then in addition to that, I've kind of just jotted out a comprehensive list of the entirety of the pattern book to give you an understanding of what's actually included in there, but we go down to bikeway types, civic space types, we have an entire collection of architectural standards and signage standards that are also included within the pattern book. So our infrastructure strategy, right now, we've done just a preliminary traffic analysis that shows what our projected amounts could be and just that circulation and looking at some of the internal capture, knowing that this is a very walkable community. We've also done a stormwater and drainage strategy, so where we want to provide stormwater treatment, such as bioswales and stormwater planters and rain gardens. Those features are great for stormwater, but they also are visually really great. So we've started to kind of look at and plan for those considerations as well. So while we do have adequate water to service the site, we are looking at potentially tying into this existing water line on both sides and then out. And then, given the, in light of the sewer moratorium, we know that that's where, we don't have it at the moment, but this is just kind of looking at preliminarily what that proposed sewer line could be. We've got some existing overhead power that pretty much encircles the whole site, and we're also right up against, so the site's right here, the southern edge of the gas line in Eastman. So I won't go over this again just because Brad covered it, but we were approved at planning commission under the three conditions as follows. And just some additional updates that we've made, we've added just a general provision under our development standards that considers federal and state laws. So if there is any laws that trump the pattern book, that it's in there, that would, you know, fall as the, what we need to abide by. And then we also added a provision that it does exempt the large-scale multifamily buildings that are specifically designated for workforce housing to require individual ground-floor access to the dwelling units, only if the facade is visible from the street. So we got very specific on that because the buildings are situated in a place where they're not highly visible. There's really only one side facade that's visible from that L-shaped corridor. So if there is to be a unit that pops out on that side, they would need to provide ground-floor access because that's the frontage that's being viewed from the street. Otherwise, we've put that exemption in there to help keep that standard typical unit for them as affordable as possible, considering we've been very flexible, or they've been very flexible with the other 12 units. We've also added a provision along the same line that exempts them from having to differentiate facades within view of another building with the same facade. So those large-scale multifamilies are the only buildings within the project that will have like facades facing like facades. Just quickly, some of our inspirations, some of you might be aware of SARMB, they've done a beautiful job incorporating sustainable stormwater practices as well as architectural design and integrating all of these spaces together as one. We looked at this a lot, we actually visited there just after we were here for the sharet, get some inspiration. Habersham, just outside of B4 at South Carolina, they've done an excellent job at placemaking and creating really special pedestrian places. Riverside Atlanta, Georgia, it's a residential community, and what we really appreciate is how all of these buildings are kind of facing into this center civic space. And then Glenwood Park, which has some excellent park spaces and pocket parks and really neat, special little moments that we're trying to replicate within this plan. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And now, Erica Gertin, is that the last name?
Yes, thank you. Yep. I know.
Are there any questions for Ms. Gertin? Would anybody have any immediate thoughts? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak in favor of this rezon? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Here now, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, but we'll be back to revisit that in just a moment. Moving to the 231 East Marable Street rezon, Mr. Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a rezon at the 231 East Marable Street property. Property is currently zoned P right now, and on the screen behind you is a survey of the existing tract. It's currently undeveloped, I believe there was a single-family residence that was raised off the property a number of years ago. Again, the property is zoned P, they're asking for a rezon to R1A. And under the R1A zoning, there is the possibility that this could be subdivided into potentially two infill lots for single-family residences. Pretty straightforward rezon request. Planning Commission made a recommendation of approval to be as submitted as, to be approved as submitted without conditions. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Any questions for Brad? Here now, I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. I believe we have a developer here, the property owner.
Joe Dixon, Expo Homes, North Park Boulevard, Lawrenceville, Georgia. He's the owner of the property.
Thank you, sir.
If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer. This is going to be in the district overlay district, I believe, also the plans will be approved.
Okay, great, thank you. Were there any questions for the builder or developer? I think we're good, thank you. Is anyone here who'd like to, yes, sir. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the rezon? Anyone who'd like to speak against? Here now, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we'll be back to revisit that in just one moment. Moving to 1125 North Broad Street rezon, I'll open the floor to council members only for discussion and/or action by council on the rezon of the property at 1125 North Broad Street from B3 to PRD and PCD.
Mr. Mayor, while I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this project from staff and the client, I do... staff and the client, I do request that we table this, as we've only recently received this and haven't had a chance to review it, as much as I would like to, and also give staff a little extra time, if they'd like, and for council to discuss further.
Appreciate that, Mr. Gregory, thank you. Have a motion to table it. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Is there any discussion? There's a lot of homework, and we'll be revisiting that over the, in the coming meeting. Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. We appreciate your coming in, ladies. Moving to 231 East Marable Street, I'll open the floor to council members only for discussion or action.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gregory, is there a second?
Second.
Is that you, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
You two are sounding soft tonight. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, good luck. Move the application of the wine shop at Highland Vine LLC, Ms. Murphy, is Ms. Murphy here? How are you? Would you like to say anything? I think I pretty much know where we're heading with this one. I'll entertain a motion.
I approve.
Have a motion to approve by Ms. Sams, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Boyce, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Sign.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm, have one abstention, motion carries, that passes. Moving to the first reading of the extension to residential developments, moratorium ordinance, Mr. Probst.
Thank you, Mayor. This is back before you, as an extension and slight revision for the residential moratorium on accepting site development plans for multifamily and townhome projects in addition to residential outside of the city core. So, essentially, it's all the same, we just covered a little bit more in terms of the multifamily and townhome project system.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Logan? The ordinance, the second reading will have to be waived, because this approval will need to go into effect immediately per ordinance 2-96. I'll entertain a motion to waive the second reading. Motion to waive the reading by Mr. Gregory, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now, moving, I'll entertain a motion for the moratorium. Motion to approve by Mr. Gregory, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to GMEB's restated defined benefit retirement plan amendment, Mr. Probst.
Thank you, Mayor. Every now and then, we get invited by GMEBs, that's a GMA pension plan for which we follow, to do a restated plan, and all we're asking for is just adoption of this, just to satisfy some of the IRS changes and other federal laws that we have to, that GMEBs has to do, and we are one of the recipients of these planned funds.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Are there any questions for Logan? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Dickinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gregory, to approve, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. We have two appointments coming up for the Planning Commission. One that expired September 1st, 2024, would like to be reinstated. Ms. Rosalynn Parks would like to continue to serve on Planning Commission, and I need a motion to reappoint Rosalynn for a five-year term to expire September 1st, 2029.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, that passes. Second, Kim Jolly would like to serve on the Planning Commission, and I need a motion to appoint Kimberly Jolly for a five-year term to expire September 1st, 2029.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Sams, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, that passes. Kim, we're glad you're here. Well, I appreciate your, I appreciate your coming in and getting involved, and I know you'll be a success, I know you're one smart lady, I look forward to your working with us. Moving to district items, Ms. Malcolm.
I really don't have anything to report. Thank you, Rodney and all of the departments for, as we've said, for all the hard work and collaboration in getting our storm situation flattened up very quickly.
Yes, thank you, Rodney. Mr. Boyce?
No, sir.
Ms. Sams?
I second, Ms. Malcolm. Thank you, everybody, for all the hard work over the last few weeks with the storms and our public safety department, and I want to thank Chief Watts for sending officers to our schools to protect our students, I truly appreciate that.
Ms. Brown?
I agree with you, Leon. I second what you said, and wanted to say also, thank you to our law enforcement for stepping up and, you know, serving and going out to help our fellow, our neighbors, and also to the fire department, thank you so much for what you do, and also Public Works for everything that they do as well.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Gregory?
You're here to all that, and Chief Dykes, thanks again to all your guys for putting out that fire out so close to our home, but we appreciate that, and thanks so much to Brad for all the hard work that he's put in on all the things he's had to review, especially things coming in late, and all that he puts up with on a daily basis, we appreciate you.
Exactly, thank you, Tyler. Mr. Thompson?
District 7 is fine with what's been going on in town with all our public safety, we appreciate them. Rodney, for your hard work today in getting all this stuff done, and just everybody's cooperation in making this city run great.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Be safe. Mr. Dickinson?
Thank you.
It's all been said, Mr. Mayor, nothing further.
Thank you. I'd started the evening with chatting, so I think I'm going to forego any additional update. We need a motion to adjourn to executive session, please.
Seven minutes.
Have a motion to adjourn to executive session by Ms. Malcolm, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Brown, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. We'll adjourn to executive session.